...of construction, there's been some false alarms and things like that. And with construction kind of taming down, and so are the false alarms. I just want to bring to everyone's attention that when those alarms are going off now, that even though it might be a false alarm, we should still treat them as though it's a real fire because you just don't know. We do have alarms go off in apartments for, you know, I burnt my toast, or I was making bacon, and, you know, anything can happen at any time. And it's important that everyone stay safe and know what to do. So the first thing is, what to do? What do I do? Well, if the fire is not in your apartment, you're going to stay in your apartment. Each of your homes is protected by firewalls and fire doors. So you want to stay in there. If it's in your apartment, obviously you don't want to be in there. You're going to go out into the halls. You're going to go in between the double set of fire doors. Whatever you do, don't prop those open, but we'll get to what not to do next. So let's see. Stay in your apartment unless the fire's in there. And if for some reason that we would have to evacuate, it's just a massive fire and we have to evacuate. These locations are where you would go. These are designated. There we go. And on the postcard, this is exactly what I'm going over, what to do. And then there's a map on where you should go. And then you'll stay in your apartment until they all clear. But the odds of us having to evacuate are pretty slim. But just in case, we want you all to know where you are to go.
So let me just add to that. So if the fire is not in your apartment, don't leave your apartment, okay? Unless there's a fired person that says, "Okay, follow me, go to your designated area." So don't leave your apartment unless somebody actually comes and knocks on your door who's wearing a fireman hat. Don't just leave for anybody. And then if it is in your apartment, we want you obviously to leave the apartment. Pull your door shut. And then those fire doors in the hallway, the ones that are really heavy that go off and we have to prop open, go on the other side of those. So that's where we want you to kind of stay safe. If you can, if the apartment, if the fire is in your apartment and you can go down the stairs, go down the stairs. But that's kind of the trigger part. We obviously want you out of the fire compartment that's there. And if the fire, if you are in a common area, go to an area that can be secured. So if you're in the legacy, stay in the legacy until we tell you where to go. If you are in the kinsale room, stay in the kinsale room. Excuse me. If you are in the Riverwalk, stay in the Riverwalk unless obviously the fire is there. And then we'll direct you to where it needs to go. Thanks.
Okay, now I want to go over what not to do. Security and maintenance, when there's a fire drill, or a false alarm, or a real fire, they're going to the panel. They are looking to see the location of where that fire is. If it's a false alarm, we need to call the fire department right away. So please don't call maintenance or security because they are doing an important job of trying to locate the fire. Is it real? So just follow these instructions. Stay in your apartment, or come out, you know, in between the fire doors, okay? And then do not prop the doors open. Has anybody seen the movie Backdraft? Where, you know, the air feeds the fire. So you really want to try not to prop those doors open. If you have to go through them quickly, go through them quickly, but do not prop them open. Everyone's safety relies on those for their safety. Yes?
So if the fire is in your apartment, you do not call anything unless we...
If the fire's in your apartment, the alarm should go off. We should be notified. And it should tell us fire in 4302, or, you know, or in a villa, or on, you know, Brandywine 246. It should tell us exactly where it is. And then security or maintenance will go to the apartment, you know, is everything okay? Or they will call, is everything okay? Is there a fire? So that's what would happen. Anybody else? Yes? On the weekends, the question was, what about weekends? Security is here 24/7. So if there's a fire alarm that goes off, they are going to, their job, their main job is to go to that panel. If there's reception here, they may call you and say, "Is everything okay?" Or security's going to call you and make sure that everything's okay if it's after the front office goes home. But you will get a phone call if it's in your apartment. But regardless of where it's at, whether it's in the legacy, your apartment, in the hallway, in the mirror field, security is here. And their first job is to go to that panel.
Can they take the panel, follow them up? Because they walk all over the panel.
The question was, can they see the panel from their phone? And the answer is no. But it doesn't take long at all for them to get to the panel. It really doesn't.
I'm just going to add to that, that the fire system that we have here is very sensitive. You all know this because remember when we had it go off every two days with construction? It's been a while since we've had that. But it's very, very, very sophisticated. And it doesn't allow, the technology just doesn't allow it to be on your phone. It's actually behind my office is where the fire panel is. And if you go back there, you're going to be like, "Oh, my gosh." Because it's very robust, very cumbersome, and it is very sensitive. So if you cook like me, it's going to go off a lot. But if you cook like other people, it may not go off. But it's very, very sensitive to smoke, to those types of things.
And we also have testing done quarterly and annually for the fire alarms and the sprinklers to ensure that those are working properly as well.
I will just add that if you live in the main building, this place is cement and steel. So the chances of having a fire are, there are chances of having a fire. The chances of it burning down an entire area are slim because it is so built and we have taken a lot of time and effort, and I've spent a lot of money to make sure it's safe for all of you. So that's the good news. The even better news is that we're going to keep working and telling you what to do because I don't think we maybe have done the best job of that in the past. And so now we're getting back to the basics and we're going to help everybody understand. And we're going to do a couple of drills too. So practice up.
And it's easy to get, you know, relaxed and everything because of all the false alarms. But it's just so important that we don't ignore them, we don't continue to our swim class, you know? Make sure that you stay in between those fire doors if you happen to be out and about when an alarm goes off. Any other questions on fire? Yes?
Yes, I think the question was, security, the alarm, the building, how do they know when the, how can they tell from panel to go upon? Or does the fire alarm want to go off in the, at the fire, how does it, how does it get, the alarm itself, the box, and then something?
Okay, the question was, how does security know? If they're out walking about, how do they know where it is? If you've ever been in the main building here and the alarm goes off, it's massive. There's, I mean, you can hear it everywhere. So the odds of them not hearing it and not knowing where to go are, I'm sorry, yes?
Who contacts the fire department?
Hold on, the question, who contacts the fire department if the alarm goes off?
And the answer is, it sends a signal to the fire department. That's why it's very important for them to get to the panel, to see where it is, to find out as quickly as they can if it's a real fire. Because if it is not, then we need to notify the fire department right away. And sometimes, especially during construction, it'll be a weird, a weird trouble going off. The fire department does come anyway. And then security, because there's more than one security officer, they meet the fire department and they say, you know, it's a false alarm. But most of the time, we can get, we can get them contacted.
So we're going to finish this up. We'll answer some more questions. I just want to clarify, when the alarm goes off, the fire department is automatically notified via the alarm panel. So sometimes the fire department gets here because they're right around the corner. Most of the time, we try and call them and say, "Just a false alarm." But it is notified. And then actually, Steve Williamson gets a call, I get a call if and when the fire department is on the way. I think Angie gets a call so that we know what's happening throughout the day. So Angie, going to talk real quick about one more thing.
Real quick, we're going to talk about tornadoes. March is the statewide tornado drill. It's something that is a requirement for the assisted living and the skilled nursing side. And this year, I would like independent living to also partake in that. And we'll send out a notification for that and let you know when that is. But this is what you would do. If you were out and about, and if there's time, obviously you want to get to the lowest level. But there isn't always time, especially with tornadoes. They can, one minute, you know they're coming, and the next minute, they're already through the town. So what you're going to do is you're going to go in to your bathroom with the door closed or the hallway outside of your apartment. Make sure that you stay away from windows and exterior doors. And it's important to know that we are in Franklin County if you have an emergency radio or you want to look on your phone or anything like that. Does anybody have any questions about that? Yes? The question was, if there is a tornado coming, or if we're on a watch, or on a warning, will they get a notification? And the answer is yes. There is, and...
To the best of our ability, right? So you're going to hear the alarms go off. We also have a satellite, the mass alerter system, the phone calls that go through, we will do our very best. But we need you to just be aware and hear. The sirens are going to be the largest thing that you're going to hear. We will do our best to communicate via mass alerter. But sometimes, as you know, we don't know that tornadoes are going to pop out of the sky. So we'll do our best.
Right. And it's important, when there's a watch or a warning, you know, we can let you know so if you want to stay in your apartment or in a safe area. And they will tell us, you know, if it's an hour, 15 minutes, or 20 minutes. So there will be, as long as the county, as long as Franklin County knows that it's coming, we'll know and we'll be able to push that out.
Are cell phones attached?
Correct. Yes. Yes.
Do you have a number four? So I feel safe and I imagine that I could better press and go down low than last night?
The question was, I live up on the top floor, and I don't feel safe up there. Should I go to the ground floor? The question is, if you have time, yes. But when a tornado comes, I mean, in 30 seconds, you don't always have that time. So if it's a watch, and you have the time, you know, by all means, come down, you know, to the lowest level. But you're not always going to have that time.
But you're not buying the elevator?
No, you can take the elevator. Yeah. It's a fire that you do not take the elevator.
All right. Thanks, Angie. Appreciate it. That's a lot of good information, isn't it? How great are your cards too? You can put them on your refrigerator. I know you're so excited about them. We got a couple of questions through the Ask FVD, or I think actually it was a direct email from the last question, or the last town hall related to some renters insurance and how things change. We talked last month, if you remember, about our overarching insurance policy that we have, which is now through caring communities. But we'll talk a little bit about individual, what that looks like.
Yeah, so these were the questions that were submitted. And I'm going to take this first one to give you a little bit longer answer because I did receive a couple of questions during tax season. Not that we're out of tax season, but how did the life care services management agreement going away February 1st change our taxes? Well, it kind of goes to the same thing here. LCS going away as our managing agent was an operational change. It did not change our legal entity in any way, shape, or form. Okay? So taxes, renters insurance, anything like that, we are still Friendship Village of Dublin Inc., Dublin, Ohio Inc. No change to either of those. So first question, does it, do we, does the management structure affect the need for individual policies? No, we're the same as you were January 31st to February 1st. You still need renters insurance for those things that are in your apartment. What we've historically told folks, if you turn the building upside down, anything that falls out that you brought in is something you would need insurance for. We own the building, we own the appliances. Most of the time, you probably brought in everything else. And I've been in some of your apartments. For some of you, that's quite a little bit. For others of you who listened to marketing and did a good job downsizing, you won't need as big a policy. So that kind of answers the first two questions. And then the range of appropriate coverage, again, that really is going to depend on, you know, how much you have in. Again, if you have a lot of expensive artwork, or jewelry, or things like that, you're probably going to want a little larger policy. If you've just got a couple of chairs and a couch and a nice 50 or 60 inch television, you might not need as much. So I really can't answer that question. It's just going to depend. And if you've got an insurance agent, I'm sure they can give you a pretty good idea as to what you might need. Any questions with any of that?
The good news is that renters policy on average is about $200 a year. So it's not a lot. If there was a fire, or a theft, or something along those lines, the contents in your apartment are your responsibility. So the contents in the greater building are our responsibility. So thank you very much for that question. I'm going to have Betsy come up and do a little introduction. I know many of you have expressed some concern with Ken leaving. We're obviously very excited that Ken is now retired, living his best life. You all know how that feels. We all can't wait for that day. But we have, we are very fortunate to have a plan for Ken. And we're going to see how it evolves over the next couple of months, but I'll let Betsy talk about that. I will say that we're going to change the structure. So now the chaplain will report to Betsy instead of going through community life to give a little bit more synergy to the program.
Hi, everybody. It's so exciting to be up here chatting with you. I'm really thrilled to introduce someone to you all today who many of you have already met. So the thing about having a transition in our chaplain role during the first week of Lent meant that last week, many of you got to meet Katie Kinnison already, which is wonderful. So as Rita alluded to, right now, we're taking a little bit of time during this transition of Ken leaving to take a step back and say, you know, what does Friendship Village of Dublin need more than anything else in terms of spiritual care? So fortunately, we were quickly introduced to Katie Kinnison, who said, you know, "You need some help? You need some boots on the ground to help out? I'm in." So Katie will be with us really starting beginning of April through, I would say at least, the beginning, middle of the summer, helping us out with our regular scheduled services, with our Bible study, with our spiritual care, and with ongoing pastoral care here in the community. Her background is really amazing. In addition to having a master's in divinity, she also has a master's in English. And so she comes at things from a very textual background. And I think folks who have already met her have enjoyed getting to know her. Folks who haven't met her, I hope that you will introduce yourselves. We will be hosting, I think, the first Monday of April, a little open house in the fireside room on a Monday afternoon. Come and introduce yourself to Katie. She's got some creative ideas, and so we're going to try some new stuff out, all while we're assessing what we need to be doing permanently in terms of spiritual care here at Friendship Village of Dublin. But I do want Katie to come up and introduce herself. So I'm going to give her a little bit of lead time and have her come up and introduce herself. We're just, we're so excited she's here. She's such a warm and lovely person with an amazing background. And so I know she's going to give us all some wonderful spiritual care in the months ahead. So introducing Katie. Katie, come on up.
Hello, everyone. So good to see you. I've actually been your neighbor for about 20 years. I live right across the street, and the townhouse is over there. I raised three girls there. One of them, Sarah, still lives with me. You may see her around. She has orange hair, Down syndrome, and brings light and joy into every situation she encounters. And sometimes other emotions as well. Right? I survived three daughters. I actually feel pretty invincible, you know? Yeah. I am having hip surgery on Thursday, which is why I'm hobbling. Just need two Sundays off. Amazing medicine technology, you know, where they go in through the front, but we won't talk details. That's just icky. But I will just be gone for the two weeks. I will keep you in my prayers. I've enjoyed getting to know you already. I'm also a pastor at Hilliard Presbyterian Church. So my center is Christianity. But I always think of myself as a mystic first, that underneath layer of God's love in the universe. And I'm trained in several different religions. In other words, I've studied multiple religions. And in chaplain training that we all have to undergo in order to be a pastor, we learn to deal with people, all situations. I'm excited about that too. If I can be of spiritual support to any of you, I am, I would be honored, and it would be a joy to do so. So thank you very much. I look forward to meeting you.
I forgot one thing. We tried to simplify things a little bit. Katie is responding to the email address chaplain, C-H-A-P-L-A-I-N at F V Dublin dot org. Now, we're not going to expect her to respond to it over the next few weeks. But ongoing, if you have ideas, concerns, pastoral care, referrals, et cetera, chaplain at F at F V Dublin dot org is going to be a great email address for finding Katie. So thanks for your warm welcome.
Thanks, Betsy.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. All right, just a quick update on a couple of new things we've added to Touchdown here in the last month or so. So last week, we had our first Wowzitude guided live tour. Austria, right? Yes. So hopefully you all had a chance to tune into that. So that is going to be a weekly thing, every Tuesday at 2:00. You can tune in via Channel 51. You can go on your app and click on the F V D Live icon, and that'll bring up the live stream. Or you can open up a browser. So on your laptop or on your computer, you can pull up the app via your browser, click on the F V D Live, and take part of a live tour. So every week, they go somewhere different. And I know Jeannie and her team are planning some fun events around the tours once we get the schedule worked out. So there was a couple of small technical issues as we started last week, but we got those resolved quickly. So that is something that will be happening today at 2:00. So tune in. And again, they're going to have some fun food and drink stuff around the locations here, so keep an eye out for that. All right. Another thing we recently added under our resident, residential health services icon. So you can now go in and schedule a home care services request. So if you scroll down, it's kind of blurry up here now, but under home care services, you can open up the request, and it's going to give you a couple of different forms where you put your information in, and then click which type of service you would like. And then someone from the home care services team will reach out to you within 24 hours to schedule that service. It could be anything from a linen change to a security check, just a different way you can schedule services with our home care team. And then coming here soon, so I think I talked about this a little bit last month, but we will have the resident comment card live and on Touchdown. So we're going to plan for a go-live date on the 21st, and then we will be pushing out some communication. We'll have a demo and a Q and A that week at some point here in this room with myself, Jeannie, her team. And really, this has been driven by the exec council, so they'll be heavily involved as well. Our current comment cards are not going to go anywhere. That'll still be business as usual if you'd like to fill out the paper form. But the comment card via Touchdown will just have a little more depth for us. So we'll be able to get some really good feedback and track and trend and analyze that information over courses of time. And so it'll be helpful. We'll go into details the week of the 21st. So that's just coming soon. That's all I have.
So Seth and I can take some questions? Yes, Jeannie. What's the current visitation policy in the dining rooms? You have to be vaccinated. I'm going to make sure, vaccinated or a negative COVID test, and you can come in and visit any and all parts of the community. I don't believe that we're limiting guests at this time. We are not limiting guests at this time. Yes, Bob?
Where do we stand on hiring and job openings?
I can probably answer to that. So Angela did send out an update to our leadership team last week, and I believe we had 13 openings was the last number I saw. So if you recall, just a few months ago, that number was 20, 25, almost up to the 30 mark. So we've made some significant strides. I know a couple of our departments, such as environmental support services, culinary, have really made some gains over the last six to eight weeks as far as hiring and getting back up to where we're used to be accustomed to as far as staffing goes.
Polly?
What is the, 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 the,
But we're using the Ask FVD via the Touchdown app just as another communication tool. So. Matt, the question is, what are the rules on visitation for brunch?
Yep. No, friends, it's, we're on a plus-two currently still. Are we...
I just said, no restrictions.
No restrictions, okay. Okay, thank you. That was a question for tomorrow. So the only thing on brunch is, for parties of six or more, we ask that you have reservations for us on the brunch day. But there are no restrictions otherwise for brunch.
We're working very, very hard to try and get back to the pre-COVID operations. And sometimes, just like this, we don't obviously know something, so it's gonna be impossible for you to know. But the goal is to not have any restrictions. The only restrictions we do have at this point is if you are not vaccinated, you are required to wear a mask. And we're also asking that you visit outside. So if you're vaccinated or have a negative COVID test, you can come and do whatever you'd like. If you are not vaccinated, you'll notice that our staff, if they are not vaccinated, they will be wearing a mask. And that is not going to change. But same thing with visitors. There's another question, yes. Mr. Ray? Is there a limit on the number of guests in the meal?
No, there are no limits. But again, as I said, for parties of six or more, counting yourself, to give us a reservation so we can kind of plan that out for the tables. Additionally, there was one other thing I needed to add. If you bring in a visitor, there is a guest sign-in book that we're still gonna keep into effect. And that's right at the front desk of both the Legacy and the Riverwalk that you'll sign in your guest.
Okay, yes. Jean? Yes. Yes, Angie can come and give us a window update. I saw this morning that there was a truck of windows, which is progress. There's lots of progress happening around here, and we like it.
So the first day was a little bumpy. Because of the weather, they decided to start with an empty apartment, which that also gave them the opportunity to see how the flow was going to go. And for the west-facing B-side apartments on the fourth floor, last night, the memo went out for your time slot when they would be installing your windows. And Sally and I will be at your apartment before they come to see if anything needs to be moved out. And we'll get your things moved out if you haven't called us. They're trying to get one floor done per week, but that depends on the weather. But like I said yesterday, it was raining and they did do an empty apartment.
Angie, how long is it gonna take to do all the windows? Ballpark. No one hold her to it.
Ballpark, about a month.
So when we're finishing up Spectrum, the windows will also be finished? How much fun is that? I don't sense the excitement from all of you. Yeah, there was a couple more questions over here, and we'll get to you. Barb, yes. Family and friends are allowed to come and visit you in your apartment. They are, family and friends are allowed to come into the community as long as you are vaccinated or have a negative COVID test. If you are not vaccinated, you are required to wear a mask. Tom? Oh, furniture and drapes. We got an update. So the artwork should be here in the next couple of weeks. They're gonna put that up. The furniture is now looking between June and August. Yes. So that is where, and it's gonna come in different pieces. So the chairs, I think, are the longer lead time than some of the couches and the end tables. So we're gonna try and get it as much as we can when it comes in, as long as it makes sense and it's finished. Yes. It's, I like to say that I like to have elevated coaching sessions every now and again. And I had an elevated coaching session, but there's nothing we can do about it, right? Like, there is nothing that we can do from a supply chain perspective on the furniture. But it is very disappointing, I would agree. Yes, Jake. Mr. Jakes. So the AccuShield machine downstairs, what are the circumstances? We actually talked about that last week. And we are going to ask that you still continue to check in and use it because that's how we know who's here. That's also if and when we have an issue, a contact tracing issue, it has all the contact information. And it gives you a nice little sticker that you can see, then that way, we know that you're a visitor. So we are still asking everyone to use the AccuShield machine downstairs. I think we've talked about taking some of the COVID questions off of it to make it a little less burdensome. But it will, I think that's a trait that will stay with us here at Friendship Village. Yes, Pat? What about deep cleaning? I love these meetings. They're so much fun. I don't have an answer. We'll get it back for you and we'll put it on the agenda for the next month. We're focused on Spectrum right now and windows. Any questions on this side of the room? Oh, over here, I'm so sorry. Yes, Laura. You're up. Laura, yes. So Laura's question was, with all of the IT, she used the word problems, I'm gonna use opportunities. We have what's charged to the resident. So if you need anything with your computer or anything that is not related to a TV, that is a chargeable service. And we can revisit that. Why don't we put that back on our IT, or the agenda next month? Because there was a pretty good chart that kind of talked about what was Friendship Village's responsibility, what was a family or a resident's responsibility. So, and we can, we'll revisit that for you. Yes. Yes. Where will the router go? The router will go in your apartment. It'll go by the coax cable. In every apartment, they're a little different. So it'll go, there's a coax cable. I don't see one in this room. They're hidden in the floor, actually. So you can go and look and see where that is in your apartment, and that's where the router will go. And when your install person comes, they'll help you. They're not gonna just walk in and put the, they're gonna ask you where they want it. They're gonna talk you through it. We can do all of that today, but every apartment is different. Your furniture layouts are different. So it's more on a case-by-case basis. And that's why you have a buddy, so they can help you. If you have a concern on your activation date, you can talk through that with your buddy as well. Yes. The router things that are in the ceiling. The G-PON system? The G-PON is still going to stay, so there'll still be a router up there that is still going, Tom's saying no. Tom, can you come answer this question, please?
What I think you're asking about is the access points, the wireless access points that are in the hallways, have the little blue light on them. Those will stay because those will be what you will connect to when you're outside of your apartments. Last meeting, we talked about, you know, having it inside your apartment, but then when you leave, you'll have to connect to guests. That will, I don't know if we're gonna take that away or not, but it will not be used. In the villas, yours is in the ceiling, and yeah, those will not be used. So we're just not gonna take them out. I don't know.
Well, we're gonna have to work through all of that and see how it goes. I mean, this Spectrum thing is massive. Tom's been literally working on this for two years. So, and it's changed a lot. And I think we've been trying to communicate with Spectrum. We're trying to give you all the information that we possibly can without overwhelming you because I think about last meeting, we overwhelmed some of all of you, some of you. So you have a buddy. These questions can come up. When you have your buddy, we will get through it together. So, yes, Lee, Lou? Where is the furniture going? The furniture that is delayed is going in the corridors of the Ash Run North building, floors two, three, four, and five. So if you remember, we finished the renovation in November. And it will be Christmas in July, maybe, when you get your furniture. All right. Happy March, Happy St. Patrick's Day. We hope that you all have a great month. We're gonna get through this Spectrum thing. When we see each other next month, we'll have other things to worry about. But we'll get through it. Thank you.